Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. You'll notice we have two board members who are traveling and unable to attend today. So we are at three. We will move on to approval of the minutes of the meeting held November 8th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. We have three people wishing to address the board on non-agenda items. So they will each get five minutes. The board sets aside a portion of each meeting agenda to hear from community members on items of general interest or concern as well as regular agenda items. Comments are limited to the five minutes unless more than three people have signed up. Then the group is limited to 15 minutes total. And we'll let you know when you have one minute remaining so you can wrap up your comments. If there are multiple people attending to speak on one topic, we would encourage you to coordinate your comments. When you're called to the podium, please identify yourself and your address and organization you represent for the record of the meeting. If you have any visual aids or handouts, please see a member of our communications team prior to the meeting. They will help you distribute information and prove any item to be shown for public viewing. The board does not take comments during this time on personnel matters, and all meeting attendees are expected to treat others with respect and civility. The board will not respond to individual comments, and staff may be requested to follow up as needed following the meeting. Thank you for coming tonight, and you're always also welcome to email all of us individuals and any administration as well with comments and probably get a written response if you needed one. Our first speaker this evening is Amy Brunner, please.
Okay, could you, yeah. I'll, I'll, we'll go, you bet, you bet. We did that a while ago because we just thought, just to make sure there's nothing scandalous that gets out there. Not that we don't trust you, but just for...
We're gonna have all of that fun right now. It's just a statement from, and then this memorandum.
Kate will time you in when you have a minute left and so forth.
Okay. I think I'll make it an under that.
Yes, you can always go under your five-minute line. We will, we will not complain.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Amy Brunner, and I'm at 3420 South Alpine Avenue. I'm here today to add to the comments that I made about a month ago related to the National School Board Association. You're all aware of the letter the NSBA sent that prompted White House action and thus DOJ action. Moral of the story there is that the NSBA, which is a taxpayer-funded lobbying group, set into motion a series of actions that would lead to silencing of parents at school board meetings and thus silencing the very people whose sweat and treasure funds them. They pushed the first domino and the consequences of their actions. In the past few weeks, 15 states have quit the NSBA over parents being targeted as quote-unquote domestic terrorists. But South Dakota has not, and I'd like to know why. The Associated School Board, Associated School Board of South Dakota has released this statement, and that's what you'll find in the first overhead there. Of note are two things. First, the date on the memo, which is November 8th. And second, the first paragraph, which I'll read. "With regard to the National School Board Association actions, the Associated School Boards of South Dakota does not agree with the request for federal intervention in NSBA's letter to President Biden, nor were we consulted about the letter." However, I'm gonna switch this out. And I can email both of these to you later this evening. They're easily publicly available. I guess maybe we just should have that. Just, let's just view the top. This is the memo, NSBA memo. Show that. Thank you. However, around November 11th, an NSBA memo was leaked. The memo was dated October 12th and was addressed to state association officers and executive directors. The memo talks about the content of the letter sent to, to the White House and follow-on action taken by the U.S. Department of Justice. The memo also states that the NSBA emailed a notice to state association executive directors on September 17th. They emailed that saying that the letter requesting federal assistance would be sent. It's important to understand that the Associated School Boards of South Dakota were informed of the letter before it was sent to the White House. I'd like to know if they did anything to stop it from being sent. If not, I would view that as tacit approval by our state association of an effort to stop the very taxpayers who fund their organization. Furthermore, the Associated School Board's statement says that they quote-unquote "have chosen to work with the National Association Board of Directors to effect change in the organization." But that's like the fox guarding the hen house because as far as I could tell from my research, and correct me if you know something that I don't. Viola Garcia, who is the NASB Board President, and Chip Slavin, who's the interim Executive Director and CEO, are both still working with and/or involved with the NSBA. They are the two people who signed the letter sent to the White House in the first place. They pushed the first domino, and then we're expected to believe that they are going to be part of the solution? Beyond just that, what benchmarks can we expect to see for this so-called improvement? When can we expect answers and real change? How will we be made aware of substantive change? Are they going to try to stop the FBI from using counterterrorism tools to investigate parents? I want to know why the National Association was seeking federal assistance for local jurisdiction issues. Let's really analyze the use of our local tax dollars. What benefit does the NSBA really provide for students, families, and citizens of Sioux Falls, our city? What value do they bring to our community, and is that value great enough to overcome the breach of trust that they have perpetrated? All of these quote-unquote "working with" comments seem like lip service to me. It seems like these people are trying to save their jobs, organizations, and maybe their agendas, and it's happening on my dollar. It needs to stop. I would assert that an organization that tries to silence the very people who fund them is not worthy of a single penny of my tax dollars. As such, I ask that the Sioux Falls School District and Board inform the Associated School Boards of South Dakota that it does not, that if it does not drop its membership to the National Association of School Boards, we will drop our state membership. Let's become State Number 16 to stand up for the voice of parents. Thank you.
Thank you. I would offer, I had told you also that we are in an NSBA, but there is a new Executive Director of, Dr. John Heim, which, who starts tomorrow. So that is different. That's not, he had not signed the letter, was not a member of the organization, that, when that...
Sure.
Okay. Next, we have Kathy, I always slaughter your name Kathy, and I know you, so I'm sorry about that. You say it and say it correctly for me, please.
You can do it. It's Kathy Bractos Bauer.
Thank you.
I live about a block over here on Poplar. And I have a very short story and a suggestion. You can't go very far in math if you don't know your times tables. It's pretty soon you're gonna need to reduce fraction or something, and you're gonna need this. So it's kind of a roadblock. And when I was teaching a remedial group of eighth graders in Ann Arbor Junior High one time, I had a student who had this very roadblock. And one day, it wasn't quite exasperation, it was more like hopefulness. I said to her, "Joanne, when you learn your times tables, I'm gonna make you a cake." And what do you suppose? That was all it took. She learned her times tables. And it was just amazing that it took so little. And so sure enough, I made this cake with Selena, like a nine-by-13, and decorated it in little sections with a little times thing on each one, you know? Seven times nine is 63 on one, four times eight is 28 on one, you know, all over the top of the cake. And so we had a little party. It was a class of 12 students in this remedial eighth grade, so it was pretty fun. And what do you suppose happened after that? The other students in the class said, "What do I have to do to get a cake?" And we had just fun all year, and people were learning things right and left. And it was just a wonderful experience. And so what had happened was, it turns out that in the Ann Arbor school system, the teachers were all given the opportunity to take a community ed class. I don't remember if it's once a year or once a semester, it might have been just once a year, but whatever. And we could do that for free. And I happened to be taking a class in cake decorating. So I was able to have some great fun with my class, with the students, using different techniques that I was learning in my community ed class. And it reminds me that, that's something that, that we could do here in Sioux Falls. We have a lot of community ed classes, and we have a lot of teachers that could use a little, little bonus. And of course, if I'd had kids at the time, I might not have ever had time to do that because you go home and grade all the papers, and you only have so much time. But it was very nice to be offered that. And I felt it was a, a way that our school system appreciated us and offered us some kind of little diversion. So I want to suggest that here, that we could offer to our teachers. And it wouldn't need to be anything that you can use in your classroom or anything, just could be for fun, for just lifetime enrichment. And it would show appreciation for our teachers because we do have a lot of wonderful things going on in community ed. And we have a lot of wonderful teachers who need a little appreciation. And I hope they realize we appreciate them, but this would be something special that you could offer. So I'm just making that suggestion. I appreciate your considering it.
Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. And last, we have Chad Bishop. A sec. I didn't know if you made it. There you are.
Did I dirty that? Sorry, I didn't warn you. I apologize. I should know by now. Just to clarify, the reason for the QR code, just to make it easy for everyone in the room to follow along and/or for you to have copies of any references that I cite. So my name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. As the largest school district in the state with over 1,800 teachers and 24,000 students under your care, which you do here matters. On November 8th, I addressed this body and began a statement where I intended to ask you to offer, if not require, screening for SARS-CoV-2 antibodies or adaptive T-cell response prior to the administration of vaccines for children on the Sioux Falls School District property. This is a continuation of that statement where I left off. Keep in mind, a 1969 article written for the American Association of Physics Teachers titled "What is Science", where Dr. Richard Feynman makes a peculiar statement. "Science is the belief in the ignorance of experts in that spirit. Do the vaccines on offer provide sterilizing immunity? Do the vaccines on offer," and I mean that in terms of the medical sense, not the tinfoil hat conspiracy sense. "Do the vaccines on offer prevent infection? Do the vaccines on offer prevent transmission? Do the vaccines on offer confer the development of mucosal IgA antibodies? Do the vaccines on offer confer the development of IgG antibodies for any other proteins other than the spike? Why are boosters already being required? We just started administering these vaccines a year ago. On October 17th, the Argus Leader reported, "What that means is better than 99% of all South Dakotans who have either been vaccinated or recovered from COVID-19 have not tested positive or tested positive a second time. You should ask yourself what the cycle thresholds used and the RT-PCR assays used to diagnose them the first time, and what rate of false positives occurred as a result." It has been months, has been 20 months and 12 days since the first case of COVID-19 was diagnosed in the state, and less than 1% have been reinfected, according to the state epidemiologist, as reported by the Argus. What should we make of a recent letter from the CDC in response to Dr. Erin Cariarty's FOIA request to where the CDC admits that they have no documented evidence of a single person with natural immunity getting reinfected and transmitting the virus? If you've followed my arguments thus far, you understand it can be credibly argued that there is very little benefit offered by the vaccines to the COVID-19 recovered or to society by them taking them. The vaccinated can still become infected and can still transmit the virus. Now extend this logic to the demographic that is at least risk of adverse outcomes: children. On October 1st, the governor of California became the first in the country to require mandatory vaccination of children for them to attend either public or private schools K through 12. The concern is that these political trial balloons get floated in a sympathetic jurisdiction and then enforced nationally. We follow what our president told us in July. If you took the vaccines, you would not get sick, you would not be hospitalized, you would not get the virus. Guess he was wrong. On October 29th, the FDA approved the emergency use authorization for the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine for five-to-11-year-olds. The same vaccine was analyzed in Israeli The same vaccine was analyzed in the Israeli study I mentioned two weeks ago. We're at a point where the most vulnerable have been vaccinated or had the opportunity to avail themselves of the vaccine. Are we now mandating the vaccination and violation of rights to protect those who will not protect themselves? California is mandating it for their children to learn. Thank God we don't live in California. Stanford's John Ioannidis, renowned epidemiologist, characterizes the risk stratification of COVID-19 as 10,000-fold between an 80-year-old with comorbidities and a metabolically healthy 10-year-old child. What does this mean? It means that their risk in terms of absolute risk reduction, if they've already had the disease and they have recovered, the benefit to them of giving them a vaccine is negligible. And if you're going to offer these vaccines onsite in the school district property, you should at least make the parents aware that they can be screened for prior infection or recovery to discern if the risk of taking the vaccine is warranted. Now, I acknowledge the risk is relatively low, but in terms of absolute risk reduction from what it would have been from someone who has not been vaccinated or not had the disease and recovered, to someone who is recovered, the benefit is negligible and there's only risk, and therefore is unethical, to give these kids vaccines without prior screening. A moral society does not ask our children to pay our generation's debts, and we do not shield adults by asking our children to take upon themselves a risk for no appreciable benefit to themselves, given this stratification. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There were no people signed up for the agenda items, so we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The agenda's approved. Onto the Good News Report.
Good evening. I wonder if you can all think of the time maybe when you've crammed for a test? Anybody remember those days? Definitely not the best way to gain and retain knowledge, but in this fast-paced world, sometimes you have to deliver information in a fast-paced environment to make a big impact. Travis Seber is the head of the Washington High School Counseling Department, and he is here to tell us about a concept called the Warrior 24. So with that, Travis, speed delivery, maybe.
Thank you for having me. What the Warrior 24 is a high school programming concept which is based off of really the three prongs of what we do in the counseling office, which is mental health awareness, academic support, and post-high school planning. And we actually had data that drove this programming model last spring during South Dakota summative, or excuse me, South Dakota assessments. We surveyed 900 students at Washington, or close to 900 students, and we got a lot of good feedback. And I've been at Washington for 14 years, and there's two burning questions that I wanted to know, was what areas do students want to learn about in their own personal growth? And the second one was what are the top issues that teenagers face at Washington and really in our community and in our world these days? We got that information back from students, and we wanted their voice to be heard. And what we did with that data is we collaborated over the summer, and with the efforts of the administration at Washington, we redid our master schedule for the first time in, I believe, two decades, where Washington now has one common lunch, study, hall, academic intervention period, and we saw the need to put programming in on a weekly basis. So we have the Warrior 24, which is 24 topics over 24 weeks for 24 minutes. And capturing teenagers' time is very essential, especially when we're during, this is during their lunch, and for many of them, their open period. So we went back to the needs assessment to go to the topics that they wanted to learn about. And I've got up on the board here some highlights of what we've done, what we've learned. What we've learned sometimes is the best message is the peer-to-peer message, which we started this in September, and for Homecoming Week, we talked about the Warrior Way and getting involved, and we invited on this one all freshmen to come to the auditorium. And this picture, up here, we invited seven seniors who have lived the Warrior Experience. They maybe started a club or an organization on their own. They've done very well in their activity, and they spoke about what being involved meant to them. We also had the freshman focus, which was focused on academics and being well-rounded. And as you could see, we then went to opt-in, and we were really nervous about having students give up their time, their own personal lunch, maybe to come into this, but we've been averaging between 40 and 55 students. And we think that's a good start. We're constantly tweaking this and constantly looking for community partners to come in and speak on these topics. So we're off to a good start, and I know that programming like this needs momentum. So hopefully, in a year, we can reevaluate and continue to build off of this. So certainly invite you on a Thursday to look at the schedule to come in to Warrior 24, and we've got very good feedback so far. And we were very nervous starting this, but we're a little bit more confident now as the wheels are turning, so thank you.
Thank you. I just, the schedule change to me, I think, is just amazing. I know Jefferson with the new building, they kind of looked at their schedule as a different mode as well, and also have a common lunch, I believe, and I think that is just a great way for, to allow for community within the building, because then you're having people at the same places at the same times. I know it causes bottleneck at some places as well, but I think it's a great way to do like this programming and also to allow for the interventions with student supports as well. So thank you very much for making change happen.
Yeah, thank you.
Forgot to mention, we have two parts tonight. So thank you to Travis for sharing that information with us. As I mentioned at the November 8th meeting, it is Native American Heritage Month. Students throughout the district are focusing on Indigenous Peoples and South Dakota's First Residents. And I just found a link on YouTube, South Dakota Public Broadcasting has done a segment on Native American education in the Sioux Falls School District, and I believe that'll be airing this next week. So I found the link early in advance, and it's very well done, so we appreciate our partners at South Dakota Public Broadcasting. To carry on with this, Don Marie Johnson is here. She is one of those who is instilling pride and courage in both Native and non-Native students as the CTE and Community Outreach Coordinator for the Sioux Falls School District. So I will invite Don Marie up, and she has a student with her. Don Marie was awarded a Dream Starter Grant from former Olympian and Pine Ridge Native Billy Mills Running Strong Initiative. She's in her second year here in the Sioux Falls School District working with students, and she and her student Alicia are here tonight to tell us a little bit about their work. And kudos to Rain, Don Marie's daughter, who attends a lot of school functions with
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving us the time to speak about our program that we began at the beginning of this year. I actually wrote this grant two years ago, and it got postponed, and I was fortunate enough to rewrite it for Joe Foss. With that, the components that I changed were to incorporate traditional sessions, which has included beading. And on December 1st, we're gonna do some cooking classes with some elders, which is gonna be really fun. But Alicia took part in our beading sessions, and I think we had maybe 15 beading sessions, and we had 27 students complete a project. She's actually wearing hers right now, which I totally love. Make sure you put your hair back a little bit. But we had a really good time getting together. It was almost three times a week, and it was Native students and non-Native students, which was really important. When I collected testimony from the students, we found that it was really empowering, not just for the Native students, but for them to be able to teach others as well. And because we had a lot of urban Indian students, majority of them didn't know how to bead. I myself don't even know how to bead, so it was really neat to see students working together again, traditional, non-traditional, Native, non-Native. And then having that in the Joe Foss Pod, if you've ever been there, we have this beautiful room that has a bunch of lights and a lot of space to just sit in a circle, and you got to get to know each other better, and it was, I thought it was really powerful. And I'm really fortunate for this grant because I'll be able to do a couple more things with it. I'm hopeful that we can continue to build on this program and hopefully find more money somewhere to do something like this. We're hopeful to do caps and gowns for the Native Ceremony for Graduation next semester through this grant. But I will let Alicia speak to her experience, and go from there.
I'm grateful for Don Marie and like the other teachers at Joe Foss because they're really involved with their students. And I know without Don Marie's grant, we wouldn't have been able to do it. I'm looking forward to like, I know with our group, we want to do a lot of community involvement. I can't remember what else. Helping feed the homeless.
Yeah, we've been invited to do a lot of different things throughout the community as a group since we've all gotten really close.
And I know we want to try doing ribbon skirts and stuff.
Yeah. Do you want to read your piece?
Oh, I made these earrings to like, for the colors of the Mason row, because like, I always grew up, we're all related, no matter like what color we are. And then I included the orange for the 6,509 Indigenous children that were found in mass graves.
That history piece was really important, and I really wanted her to come and speak to that because we just had our Wear Orange Day. We did that at the school, where staff were invited to wear orange on a particular day, which honored the children that were found in graves. So we've been doing a lot of different awareness things through our group and then through this grant, and that is me. Yeah. And it's just been, it's been really neat, like I said, to get everybody together and build that sense of community, not just for Native populations, but for other people to see us as people. And I'm hoping to build on that, and I hope Joe Foss can continue this program, and we're really glad we could be here tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for taking the initiative to apply for the grant and offer this opportunity. And Alicia, thank you for coming here tonight and spending the time with us and sharing this story.
Oh, and lastly, we do, through the Indian Education Parent Committee that I'm on, we are having a community meal on December 10th. Time is 5:00 to 8:00, and everybody is invited. I'm hoping and looking for volunteers. If anybody's able to do that, but you can reach me because it'll be at the Caxton Park Building. So everybody's invited to that. Do you want to say something that bad?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that concludes our two-part Good News Report.
Well, thank you. It was worth having, too. We do not have any new conflicts of interest presented, so we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda, Items 9A through H. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Those are approved. Onto supplemental consent agenda, 10A and B. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And one abstention from Board Member Parker. Onto reports of the Superintendent, Special Services Transition Programming Report.
Yes, tonight, we are welcoming Nikki Whiting. She's gonna provide us with a report update on our transition programming, and I think this is such a good area to highlight for many reasons, but one being that many people don't realize that we serve students all the way through age 21. And so a lot of good things have been happening to help them begin that transition into an adult life, and so we're looking forward to hearing your report.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for having me. What great information tonight on community and inclusion, and we're just gonna continue with that conversation. So I'm Nikki Whiting, and I coordinate the transition programs for students ages 18 to 21. I also am charged with accountability and outcomes for the special services, so state reporting and everything that goes along with that. So the district priority area is academic success, ensuring that students have that multiple pathways with connected career-connected learning. This was just a statistic that I had found from the National Center for Education Statistics for graduation rates for students with disabilities in 2018 and 19. And I thought it was interesting, nationwide, students with disabilities that graduated with a regular high school diploma, so a mild disability of speech-language, 85% of those students graduated with a high school diploma. Students with multiple disabilities, those are typical severe disabilities, so cognitive disability, orthopedic impairment, and autism. 45% of those students graduated with a high school diploma. Alternative certificate, students with cognitive disabilities with 32%, and then that mild disability, speech-language, at 3%. The high school graduation rate for students with disabilities rose to 68.2% from 67.1 in 17 to 18 school year. So we're going up, and we continue with that trajectory. When we're in the transition meetings, we kind of start with the beginning. They're ending their academic careers, so they're really ending that high school learning, and we're beginning to focus on that functional learning, those transition skills. We call it adulting for students ages 18 to 21. So we're at the beginning, and we have adulthood that is ahead of them, and we are preparing them for adulthood. The skills that we teach under that transition adulthood umbrella are those daily living skills, social skills and behavior, self-advocacy, independent living, money management, budgeting, work, and vocational skills, community access participation, and then adult services preparation. So if they want to go to STI after they leave our transition programs, or if they want to go to Augie Access, so we're really arming them with all of these transition skills. And typical to our elementary, middle school, and high school students, we can't assume that they know these skills. So these are direct instruction practices that our great staff in all of our transition programs do and work to support our students with every day. Really what has guided and charged us as a district of looking really comprehensively at our transition programming is Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, WIIOA. It's really the, it's, is an amendment of that Rehabilitation Act of 73. And what it has done is it really emphasizes the transition programs that we're offering to students with disabilities. So it really opened our eyes and really charged us with saying, "Any student with a disability, we really have to offer transition programming, enriching transition programming, regardless of how severe that disability is." WIIOA really mandates that we provide students with, they're called pre-employment transition services. We have five required activities that we have to provide. So job career exploitation counseling, work-based learning experiences, counseling for opportunities on those post-secondary or transition programs, workplace readiness training, and instruction and self-advocacy. When we talk about transition, it's really that IEP team decision and where that student goes from there. So that eligibility team determines, based upon that student's IEP disability and the evidence, where that student is going to be receiving those transition services. And that IEP team proposes that transition pathway. So we're very fortunate in this district that we have multiple pathways for students ages 18 to 21 who have disabilities. The four transition programming pathways that I'm gonna highlight tonight, students can stay at their home attendance center, and they have, we have Community Campus, we have Project Search at Dal Rommel, and we have Lifescape Pathways. Students staying at their home attendance center, they can continue working on that standard diploma. We have some students that really, really want to earn that standard diploma, and we've determined them eligible, but they say they want to stay at their high school and earn that standard diploma. Or if we propose a transition program and the parent says, "No, I'd really like them just to stay at their high school," then we support the teachers at the high schools to provide transition programming through their daily schedule at the high school. transition programming through their daily schedule at the high school. Community Campus. So, Community Campus is a transition program that was created in 1999, started in the Western Mall. And it's really a community-based transition program where they access city transportation. They have half-day of a functional academic learning and then half-day of work-based in the community. So, they're volunteering, they have paid through project skills, work experiences, or they're competitively employed. So, when it first started and our students who attend half-day, we really want them to be able to work in a five-to-one ratio. And then, as we have looked at the transition programming and what WIIOA really forces to do as a district and say, are we meeting the needs of all of our students with disabilities? The most severe students with disabilities and the students that are kind of in-between, the mild and the most severe, that still have those opportunities to work. So, in the 2021 school year, we began to offer a full-day program for students with disabilities. So, they received a half-day of functional academics and then they received a half-day of vocational skills instruction, which is really kind of those soft skills, that entry-level job skills training. And the goal for those students is they were able to work in a three-to-one ratio. Those students are typically unable to access city transportation independently, so they access paratransit. The growth at Community Campus that really started, over the last 10 years, we've had 400 students that have participated in transition skills education at Community Campus. And they're really eligible through June 30th of their 21st birthday. The full-day programming growth, in 1920's school year, we added five full-day students. Then in 2021, we added eight full-day students. And then this school year, we've added 12 full-day students. So, I'm going to turn to my notes. Typically, I don't need notes, but I'm going to use my notes for this one. So, for our half-day students right now, we have 40 students at Community Campus. We have 13 full-day students. And for that, we have 15 staff that support them out in the community. So, we've outgrown the Western Mall. We, it's a small, we have two suites there. So, our overflow, we had to find a place for those full-day students and we are housed at Axtel right now. So, we have some students that stay a full day at Axtel and we have some students that attend a half-day at Community Campus and go to Axtel for that vocational skills training. So, we're looking, Mr. Kreider, we're looking to try and house everybody under one roof, because the goal is that they all have individualized skills. So, they all should be able to go fluid between each level. The highest level for maybe math instruction, the lowest level for reading skills and vocational skills training. That's really the goal of that program and the vision that we have. Our next transition program is the Project Search Program. The goal of, sorry. Project Search is a transition to work program and it's a national program. And we were very, very happy when we started talking to the National Project Search Program. It's really, the goal of it is to be embedded in a work site, that Project Search work site. It's aimed towards students who are committed to reaching that goal of competitive employment. By the time they finish Project Search, the goal is that they are working at least 16 hours a week or more. Students report to a host business site within the community. It's community-based completely. They are immersed in that community-based site. So, all of the rules, COVID rules, all, everything that that business requires, our students require. I have said that they should be looked at as employees of that business and that's really the emphasis that we've continued with. So, they participate in three internship rotations throughout that full school year. We have a teacher and a skills coach at the Project Search site. Their first year was last year and COVID not only impacted our schools, but it also impacted our businesses greatly as well. So, we were unable to go into a community-based site last year. But of course, our transition teachers are the best, so we may do. And we created a half-day of instruction, or I wouldn't say a half-day, but we created some instruction and they were housed at Axtel. And the rest of the day for their rotations, we worked with community business partners and we had those students out in those rotations, working in the community. So, we were very, very lucky that we had several employment opportunities for our students in the community. So, we had five students last year, our first year. All of those students were in their last year of eligibility from Community Campus. We wanted to see how it was really going to work, just to kind of get a solid foundation for Project Search. So, of those five students, four students met that goal of working over 16 hours per week. And we had one student who was working 15 hours per week. And he's like, I think that's just enough. Like, you can't get one more hour in there? Nope, 15 hours is just enough. So, when they have their mindset on something, it's just, okay, that's where it's going to be. It's 15 hours per week. So, year two, we were proud to have a partnership with Dal Rommel, the retirement community. I really, it's a resort. It's a retirement resort is really what I look at it when I'm there. We were so very, very fortunate that there were some previous Sioux Falls School District employees that were at Dal Rommel. So, and of course, Deb Mylenberg Wilson, she knows a lot of people throughout Sioux Falls, so she was able to help kind of set, set forth the Dal Rommel partnership. And this year, we have six students at Dal Rommel. We have three Community Campus students in our last year, and then we have three high school students. So, Project Search is not just for students who have already been through a transition program. It's really geared for those students that need that competitive employment experience. So, high school, right out of high school, maybe they already have independent living and budgeting and money management, but they just have not had an opportunity for employment skills training. So, Project Search can serve that for them. The internship rotations, we have Dieteri. It's Cobles, so it's like a deli restaurant that they have. We have gift shop, we have housekeeping. We have activities where they're playing bingo and they're doing lots of different activities. Village South, which is an independent living area. So, our students are helping individuals that live in that independent living area with the garbage, putting clothes away, laundry, all of those different things. And then memory care. Those are the internship rotations and they do three per year. And then our last transition pathway is Lifescape Pathways. And that's an out-of-district placement. Our goal is, as we've grown for Community Campus for the full day, is to reduce the number of students that we put in our out-of-district placement. The goal and my vision as, and our vision as a leadership team is really to keep our students within the district. And so, the students that we are sending to Lifescape Pathways really require more medical cares, personal cares, and more behavior support cares. That's a year-round transition program and they've done a good job of continuing to provide transition services, similar to what Community Campus does. They're just able to support the students that require more cares and supports. Any questions?
Great report and great information. It's exciting to see that it's grown and that we are needing to look maybe to, for a combined space so that we can house everybody together. That'd be great. But thank you for answering that question for me, because I was curious how much it had grown to. So, yeah, great programming and I love that they're getting into the community and getting those skills. It's just a great win-win for the community as well as for these students. So, thank you.
Yeah, transition is really a grieving process for, for families if they're eligible for transition and they're going to one of our transition programs, because their students not take, their child's not taking that typical pathway. And so, it's not only supporting the student, but supporting that family through the next three years. So, our teachers are great. They take on a lot on their shoulders in supporting families with guardianship and SSI and all of the adult services that they have to support and will need after they leave us. And so, I can't say enough about our transition support teachers and what they do for our families, because they're counselors and they're social workers and they're setting up the bus and they're helping them set up SSI and all of that. So, I can't say enough about our transitions.
Yes, especially now that most DSS offices are closed and you can't go into them, that makes it even harder for these families to get that information.
Yeah, and we, our family support 360 program that is statewide, that really is like that case manager after 21. There's a two-year waiting list right now for family support. So, we're really working with the high schools to start some of those transition services early. So, then when they come to us, we can really focus more on the instructional piece, because a lot of times we're supporting that student, supporting that family with a lot of those ancillary programming decisions and supports that they need.
I just want to give a shout-out, you know, to make this program work, it takes a lot of community businesses who are willing to hire our students and to treat them like employees. And I love it when I am out in some of those locations and you see our students. And so, it's just so important and we really appreciate our businesses. And they've done it for many years as employers, but it's a, it's a game for them as well, because they're getting some of the greatest employees in Sioux Falls. The other thing that I just wanted to highlight is just one thing that you mentioned briefly, but is so important to our students, once they do transition into adulthood and they lose school transportation, they are very dependent upon city transportation, city services, accessibility kinds of things that help them navigate. And so, we want to make sure that we thank our city and that we continue to encourage our elected officials to really think about life in Sioux Falls through that accessibility lens, so that they can cross the street and have curbs. And all of the work that's happening, a lot of that is to increase those accessibility things, street crossing mechanisms that have both a visual as well as an auditory signal and just all of the different ways, because we don't want a student to come all this way through transition and graduate and then not be able to access employment in all of the ways that they can. So, I think those are just two really important things for us to both express appreciation as well as continued encouragement for how our city views and supports our students and adults with disabilities.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the enriching transition services we are providing for students within the Sioux Falls School District?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you. Onto setting the 2022 School Board election date.
Yeah, just briefly, we have two expiring terms, next July. There are Board Members Ryder and Baker. To fill the vacancies, of course, we must hold an election. It is even, even-numbered year next year. So, once again, we are proposing to combine with the city and hold our election with them. In your materials, you have a resolution doing that and designating April 12th, 2022 as Election Day in conjunction with the municipal election for the city of Sioux Falls. Some key dates, in addition to April 12th, are the February 1st is the first day nominating petitions may be circulated. The last day to file petitions is March 4th. And the deadline for voter registration is March 28th. And once again, Election Day will be April 12th. So, I just ask you to approve the resolution you have in your materials. Thanks.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the resolution as well as to set the election date. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That is approved and set. Those dates and information will be on the district website as well for people to reference on that. Anything else? Just a reminder, there's no school in the district Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week. So, hopefully people will enjoy their break from school and use that for good family, community time. Do I have any other good news for the board? Okay. Saying then, do I have a motion for adjournment? Oh, we have to move to executive session. Do I have a motion for executive session? SCCL. Sorry about that. Thank you. I have a motion, second. All those in favor of executive session, SCCL 1-25-2, brand 2, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session.